...at 5:00 PM. However, we need, for the young people here, we have nine council members, so we have to have five in order to conduct official business. So we're waiting on one more young people. We can't, we can't cast a vote on consent agenda or anything. We can go pledge and pray. We can do it. I'll have to sit with you again. Right, lady, can I hear? Uh, it's 5:01, so I'll, I'll give them sixty more seconds to see if anybody's coming up the elevator. Yeah, I get an elevator too.
Mr. Rashid, have you got one coming in? Got one coming in. Ms. Proten, President Proten, To ten, ten, whatever. They, uh, yeah. Come on, watch football, Dale. I just want to watch the ball.
Mr. Rashid, is that a council member getting off the elevator? It's opening.
Well, it's like Christmas box. See what you got. Adam Howell over there is a great guitarist and musician. Yeah, playing the reggae. Seve Smith bringing one.
Okay, okay. Thank you, I appreciate it. We're gonna, um, so we're gonna go ahead and open up, and we're gonna, we're gonna take care of those items that we, uh, that do not, uh, concern a vote, okay? We have, young people here, they have homework, and they are here on official business. And, uh, Ms. Jones, did you happen to see a council member behind you? Ms. E. Jones?
I saw him.
I saw still there. All right. All right. I just gotta find stuff. Hold on. All right, the time is now 5:03 PM. We were trying to give other council members time to come so we can conduct official business. So what we'll do, we'll go ahead and open, and we'll take care of matters that don't concern, uh, um, voting, and we'll move from there, and hopefully somebody remembers this Council Day. Uh, we are now called to order, and I'm gonna ask, uh, Councilman Shore, if you will, lead us in prayer.
My goodness, pray. If you have a father coming this evening to seven city council to conduct and transact the business of our people, he asks you to be faithful to God and to help the liberation, encourage us to do what is right for the citizens of Selma and Alabama, encourage us to be true to your people and not to ours. We're gonna always remember that whatever we do, we're gonna do it in the grace of God. And whatever we do, we all need to remember, it is about the people, it is for the people, and it's others. It is not of ourselves, and it is not by ourselves, and it is not of ourselves. And we do these things decently in the world, we know we're gonna continue the blessed I see, and we're gonna always do it in the grace and honor of God, and the holy name of Jesus, we pray.
Amen.
Amen. All right, we're gonna ask, um, um, School of Discovery, this is FB LA, and is it something else, someone else as well, another group as well, just FB LA? We were gonna ask FB LA, uh, School of Discovery, to please come forward and lead us in the way. Just come on up, just how you rehearsed it, we'll follow you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tringie Hardy, and I am the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty Vice President of Future Business Leaders of America, School of Discovery, Genesis Center. Under the leadership of our Principal Mrs. Led and Superintendent Dr. Williams, we are the future of this country and this city. We thank you for having us.
Thank you for being here. I'll.
My name is Rakaya Scott, and I will be leading you through the pledge. Please sit right here over your heart, and we'll start the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, just as we see it in the sky.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and I think, um, is there anyone else that had a speech beyond the Vice President? And, and that was it. So, um, let me remind you all that we have, uh, our young people in the audience, our sixth graders in the audience, until six PM. At six PM, we will pause for just a second to allow them to exit the building. Uh, they are here from five PM to six PM on today, and they are learning from us. Uh, so.
Attendance is something that you like.
Yes, yes, and, and you have lots of things today. We cannot, we are not from having business. Um, so normally, we start at five o'clock PM, official business, and as you all can see, there are four of us here. It takes five of us to cast votes, and so, um, we went ahead and opened the meeting, and hey, lo and behold, five and six are here. And so, once they come up and take the stand, we can then conduct official business, so that is why we have started with you all, we're finished, but thank you, young people for being in the office. All right, we are officially calling this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
President Wood, Councilman Bo Lee.
Here.
Councilwoman Youngblood.
Here.
Councilwoman Jackson. Councilwoman Proten Benjamin.
Here.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Here.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson. All right, the character trait of the month is creativity, approaching a need, a task, on an idea from a new perspective, all right? Approval of the agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Salute.
Sir.
Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Proten Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bo Lee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson. Councilwoman Proten Benjamin.
Here.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Here.
All right, the character trait of the month is creativity, approaching a need, a task, on an idea from a new perspective, all right? Approval of the agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Salute.
Sir.
Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Proten Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bo Lee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna read through, and I'll read it quickly, because I know you have it before you, and you can read, and you can read. So I'm gonna read it through, through quickly, the consent agenda, and you tell me what your pleasure is, council members. Item number one, to approve resolution R. one forty-eight dash eight two nineteen, awarded a contract for fixed asset inventory to asset services. Number two, to approve, to carry forward in the funding year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, fifty-six thousand dollars for a car station. Number three, awarded to Advantage Concrete. To approve, number three, to approve garbage exemption for anyone one hundred years old or older. Number four, and this is to include Ms. Sally Jackson, um, we can actually call, if this passes, we can call this her resolution, probably, y'all think about that. Item, item number four, to improve, to approve thirty-five thousand dollars operating costs transferring from terrorism lodging tax to the general fund. Number five, to approve, to ratify and affirm the Selma High School Homecoming Parade to three ninety. Thank you for putting that out, and I didn't know what it was. To approve, number six, to approve placing murals on the Selma Welcome Center. Number seven, to approve a fee waiver for December second through December fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, uh, to perform an art center, and, uh, this is based, and I'm gonna go ahead and, and that you all know, this is not on your number seven, but add it, this is for Holiday House. Okay, we discussed it on last night, so add that to your number seven, just for your record. Number eight, to approve, to enter into a contract with ASMA with the funding coming out of the Community Development Line. Number nine, to approve a mutual termination of lease between the city and county for the Dallas County Youth Sports Place. Council members, we have nine items. Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes, ma'am, I don't remember, I was discussing, um, number four.
Okay. Did we? You wanna put that for discussion?
Yeah, 'cause I wanted to know what, what it said.
He just, uh, I think it was in reference to supporting the YMCA.
Oh, okay, if we did, that's fine, if there was a consensus, that's fine, I'm good with it. Well, the meeting was over, when it was brought up, the meeting was over, and you all were out, out the door. If there was a consensus, someday I'm with that, because I'm, I'm. I don't know about consensus, but that's what happened. I'm good with that, I'm not gonna hold up. Okay.
I like to put out no April for discussion, but it is.
Okay. Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes, uh, I didn't see my, uh, on the contracts that I'm supposed to be approving or voting.
Can you get them, use them, I can't, I can't do it.
I said I don't see the, uh, contracts on that work that I'm supposed to be approving or voting.
You already submitted the contracts to someone?
Uh, not to the designer. I have them.
You have the contract?
Yes.
You, you want them as item number ten, your contracts, tell me what it's supposed to be.
Uh, I, I thought it was on here.
You don't wanna ask?
No, I, I didn't.
Okay, you have the information, madam.
I think this is what you all did last night, President Wood presented, this is prepared by President Wood.
Oh, okay.
This is his presentation.
Yeah, we know. All right, so you had the contracts. Okay, okay, you do not, okay. All right, anything else, council members? All right, Councilman Bo Lee?
Uh, no, never mind, you already pulled four, four's gonna be pulled off for further discussion.
Yeah, four for discussion, eight for discussion.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, Madam Clerk, uh, roll call for numbers one through three, five through seven, and number nine. That's minus, uh, number four and number eight, is there a motion?
No.
Second. All right, any discussion, further discussion. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Proten Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilman Bo Lee.
Yes, excluding the two, number forty.
Councilwoman Youngblood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman, sorry, Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Council members, we're down to approval of the council meeting minutes. We do not have any to, uh, vote on this time, and we will, um, Madam Clerk, talk with me, and she will have them at the next council meeting for our review ahead of time and for our voting at the next meeting. So those are unavoidable for now. We're down to announcements, are there any announcements? Okay, Councilman Johnson?
Yeah, I just wanna, uh, simply know that, um, October thirty-first, uh, we will be having, we will be having, uh, our annual, annually, annually, uh, Halloween, uh, festivals that we all prepare for the kids, uh, except members' sports, so it'll probably start around four or five, so bring the kids out, and I think for the last few years, we've been having awesome times, so I just wanna frame that, let everybody know that we will be having it this year as well.
Councilwoman Shore?
I'm gonna be asking the Senator Turner, Woodrow Jones, giving, I got a opinion from the Attorney General about the legal payment of the legal bill. I've seen a long time.
Okay.
That represented pre-council people, and his bill, when the council president was identified as a council member, I don't know who that person is. I still say that that bill, um, should not be paid by the taxpayers' dollars. That was, um, that was a criminal investigation that's been undertaken. Counselors actually come in, we didn't have to know, but those who went, went without legal representation, other than the three that was mentioned, and of course, they had a right not to go in, they had a right to the attorney. But I contend that whatever legal representation that they took there, should be a cause, uh, pertinent to them. So I'm gonna be asking the attorney to get, uh, a legal opinion from the Attorney General.
Thank you so much for your due diligence on that. Are there any more announcements, council people? Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes, uh, I would like to invite the whole entire city of Selma out. Uh, we always do, this is our third year of Stop the Violence, uh, event we have in our community, we invite, uh, uh, each ward out, because someone in each ward has lost a, a loved one, gone violent, and, um, we try to recognize the city, and we try to encourage our youth about the violence, stop the violence, and, uh, we'd like for everybody to take part in, it would be October the nineteenth, at Mount Zion Committee Baptist Church, we restart at twelve, we will have, uh, we'll have, uh, some very important people, uh, talking to the citizen and also to the youth about, uh, stop the gun violence.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Shore?
I wanna add to the record, uh, that bill in and of itself, not voted upon by this council, our elderly was paid. Uh, it is a law that whatever expenditures in that matter should be voted by the council, but we joined the vote, and that vote was never taken. Also for the record, I won't, this way comes to be entered, that she indicated when she was asked about this issue, that it was an honest mistake, and I, and I respect and accept that, but it was a costly mistake, no doubt of this.
Please, if you would add those to the minutes again, we would appreciate it, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Youngblood?
Thank you, Madam President Proten. I have a slew of announcements to make, and I wanna go ahead and like them, because I want to stay in public to hear these, uh, for say, or in court. First of all, Ms. Medley, I do not wanna steal your thunder on this, but I wanna brag on you a minute, um, I understand that Ms. Medley has been working real hard with the folks over at Auburn University with the Economic Development and, and Government Institute. I've been hearing real good things about her and her work. She's been working tirelessly with them to get a workshop over here for Oc- October the twenty-ninth about entrepreneurship. So if you have thought about starting a business, or you have a business that you may want to take to the next level, or you're struggling, Cheryl's really the one that needs to be, she needs to, to have a time to come up here and talk about it. But it's October the twenty-ninth, from nine to three, at the Trustmark, I still wanna call it the People's Day, um, Trustmark National Bank, at three ten Broad Street, um, and it's free, but they just have to know, you have to register in advance, um, and, and the number is at three three four eight four four three eight eight seven. Again, that's three three four eight four four three eight eight seven, and it's about entrepreneurship. It's what is called a pop-up workshop, but anyway, that's, that is, um, a real good thing, because the Government and Economic Development Institute at Auburn University is gonna be putting this, um, with Cheryl Medley of the Chamber of Commerce, she's worked very hard to get this done.
Uh, Ms. Medley, if you were saying to let the young people see you, we have a lot of them.
Ms. Medley can start working with you, even in sixth grade. That's right, and that's, that's one of the, the many things that she's, she's been working on to, to help people, to help develop the town and, and retail, and help people get businesses started, so we just don't get that word out enough. Did you wanna ask something, Ms. Thomas?
No, ma'am, I wanted to. Oh, she said she has a slew of them.
Listen, I think this is gonna be, y'all, that Michael Johnson, not, not the one up here, now he does a lot of good stuff, too. Ooh, he does, of course, he needs to tell y'all about Halloween himself, when he's ready to, but the, the other Michael Johnson, whom we also love, is joining with the YMCA, they're gonna have a fall festival, November the second, at the YMCA, um, it's a community event, so come from twelve to five on November the second, at the YMCA. And you know, if Michael Johnson and the Y are joining forces, it's gonna be real good. So y'all come on out, twelve o'clock, November second. And, um, the Lupus Foundation is gonna have a walk on October nineteenth. Now y'all don't forget about Ms. Jamie's thing, this about end of violence, that's important, because it, it, it just, it really is, I could go on and on about that, I used to work with, with people who were, um, families with victims of violence. But, uh, I'm gonna do that, I'm gonna go over to Jamie's, uh, Stop the Violence thing, and then we're gonna go over and walk to raise money, to help do research to end lupus, I don't know if y'all know about lupus, but it is a terrible, terrible thing. Your body thinks it's allergic to itself in a big, big way, we need to make sure, city. But we're gonna do, um, October nineteenth, there's the Lupus Walk. So, um, and then, I forget Sunshine's day, but it's on, the day that Sunshine's.
This week.
This weekend.
Thursday, Friday.
Thursday and Friday. Sunshine Avarada's having a fall festival down here at the Butterfly Park for children. So y'all can go down there and have a good time doing that. So we got a bunch of fun stuff going on in Selma.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Youngblood? Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes, I would like to say to the citizens of Selma, I will be joining, um, in Hattiesburg, Mississippi, with, uh, Keep Alabama Beautiful. And then, we, uh, come from all over parts of Alabama, re- represent our city, because it's important that, uh, we're taking this leadership on, uh, keeping our city clean, and, um, we want to, uh, come back with new, fresh ideas, that what we can do and improve our city, because if clean city, our city being clean, that makes, uh, people wants to come to our town and visit, and I just hope that, um, we continue to work with our community in our city, and push more efforts about, uh, littering, because this is one of the most important, we go to other cities, and you see our cities are clean, so we, we're working on being a part of Keep Alabama Beautiful.
Now, Ms. Jamie, this is Councilwoman Thomas.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
Isn't this the national thing?
Yes, this is a big national.
Gripen Shanty Selma at the national thing, isn't that wonderful?
Uh, Commissioner Ruben, she will be gone, she does the county and I, and I, um, represent the city of Selma. We come from, uh, we've been going for the last two years with, uh, Keep Alabama Beautiful, we are from all parts of Alabama. We are from small towns, big towns, and, um, those are our issues, it's like an organizing campaign, we are meeting with Mississippi and Hattiesburg, and, um, we wanna bring back to our city how important it is to keep our city clean.
Thank you so much, Madam Beautification Chair, we do appreciate it. We're moving on to citizens concerned, and we have Dr. Stanford Angian, please come up, Dr. Angian, from Selma University.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. Let me get my hand out before I start.
You can go ahead, sir, we'll catch up with you.
Thank you very, very kindly. Uh, as you've said already, my name is Stanford Angian, and I am the Vice President for Academic Affairs at Selma University. And I am here, uh, to make you aware that Selma University is at a critical crossroads, and we need each of you, board members and friends, to unite with us, uh, during our Fall twenty nineteen Giving Campaign. We are in need of two million dollars to pay off debt to the United States Department of Education, and to establish an endowment for the institution. It is necessary that we raise these funds immediately, and be able to rea-, in order to be able to reapply for recertification for federal student financial aid. That is significant, uh, that this occur this fall, so that we will be able to resume regular operations in the spring. And so your generous contribution and support would help greatly. Selma University is important to this community and to the region. While many people may not realize that we are even in the city, the impact of Selma University goes forth. Our university generates about a hundred and twenty jobs in the local area and the regional economy. Eighty of those jobs are on campus, about forty-one of them are indirect. It prepares graduates for success, S U generates economic success for its graduates by enhancing their ac- academic, uh, educational training and leadership skills. It's, uh, Selma University provides access to higher education to a diverse population of under-prepared students. Approximately ninety-five percent of our students are from high poverty, low academic achieving areas, who depend on Selma University for gaining a higher education. We create servant leaders. Selma University helps create servant leaders who value integrity, honesty, and respect for others. Selma University opened many doors that are closed to people who have had setbacks in life. Many under-prepared students, who are not able to attend any other four-year institution, can find success at Selma University. And so I encourage you to help us to keep our doors open. What can you do? I'm asking that each of you, council members and staff members, make a donation to our effort. I'm asking you to encourage at least five other people to make a donation to our effort. I'm asking each of you to please push this effort of giving. I would like to say that Bennett College, a college that has two hundred and ninety-eight students, last December, the eleventh of December, they found themselves in a similar situation. They launched a giving campaign to the community, and in less than sixty days, they raised nine point four million dollars. The entire community got behind them on their social media campaign, and it went across the United States of America, and you can read it, uh, at any time by simply Googling Bennett College. So I'm asking you to please get behind our campaign. Today marks the launching of our campaign, starting tonight and tomorrow, you will see social media messages going out, you will hear radio announcements going out, you will see, uh, various flyers and other meetings, and I ask that you please get behind it and help us. On November the second, between eight AM and four PM, I'm asking you if you would take a minute and participate in a radio phone that we will be having sponsored by one oh five point three FM. Uh, the radio phone will give opportunity for each of you to just say anything that you would like to, to our listeners about supporting Selma University. Finally, I ask for your prayers, uh, for Selma University. Thank you very, very kindly.
Dr. Angian, um, thank you so much, and just to be clear, you are asking three things of us, uh, one, that we donate to this cause of Selma University, two, that we encourage five other people to donate, and then, three, that we help you on your push campaign, to push this information out to the public, is that correct?
Yes, and then two, two additional, and that you take a minute and stop by on November the second, or call in to our radio phone to show your support, uh, and the last thing, number five, is to keep us in your prayers.
Okay. Councilwoman Youngblood?
Thank you. Dr. Angian, uh, when I first heard about this, I can't tell you, um, how distraught I was, because to have a, a, our second historically black college, um, say, in Selma, Alabama, this is something inherently wrong with that. Um, I know all over the country, we're having problems with that, because it's sort of two-inch sword, um, as, as people have been able to go wherever they want to, and they've gone to bigger other colleges, they've left the HBC's behind, and so that, you know, but, but it's, it's great that everybody has the same opportunity, um, but, um, it's, and, and I, I went ahead, I just took the opportunity myself, and I was at a conference with a diverse group of people, and talked to some folks from Birmingham, who are talking to some other people from Birmingham, and some folks are putting their heads together to maybe just see, to talk to some, you know, just a network of, of things going. I'm hopeful that they may have some contact, you know, further up the line, you know, further up the food chain, 'cause you, I don't have to. Because you, I don't have to tell you how, how this, this food chain's just about even up, you know, down here. And you understand that you've heard, you know, a lot of the things that we're going through here. Gosh, I wish that we could rescue Selma University. I wish that we could, could do, uh, bail it out, do all sorts of things. Um, hopefully, this can be abated. And hopefully, Selma University can grow and can do some things that will put it in a sure stead where you all won't have to worry about this anymore. Um, that would be wonderful to see happen. Just the name Selma University and being a historically black college, I would love to say, you know, for that alone. But knowing, um, I have a lot of friends who have gone through, like, through Selma University. And I think that it would be a travesty to lose it. So I'm very hopeful that we can find a solution.
Thank you.
And, uh, Councilwoman Thomas, this is in your ward.
Yes, and I have, I have been attending the meetings with, um, Dr. Angian. Um, I support him. I support this college for many years as a little girl growing up in that community. The college is right on the area street that I live on, we're facing each other. And as I grew up, I seen many people coming to our city, many people went to college there. Uh, uh, even we had Upper Bay, we had a lot of things at Selma University. And, uh, I took a lot of part in that area. And, uh, you know, for many years, I seen how Selma University been up and I seen how Selma University been down. And, um, I'm with them on all what they're trying to do. I support them. And this school has a lot of that history. And, uh, a lot of people, uh, went, went to that college, a lot of our doctors, professors, people that I know, that I've seen in my community growing up, that, uh, were a part of Selma University. And also, I have been, uh, reaching out, talking to some of the people. And I told them that, uh, Selma University means a lot. And, uh, I'm gonna work very hard, continue to come to the meetings. I missed a couple of them because we were into the bill of our budget. And, uh, I will continue to support you and do what, be, be right after with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman.
Councilwoman, uh, LeWor.
I would like to recommend, Dr. Angian, uh, how, how you doing? I have to say since you did the whole prayer for our, for July celebration today, going out, I want to be on my thank you for that. I would like to recommend that this council do a schedule for the radio phone that we will pick out a half hour on that day. Do not leave our boards, through the airwaves, in support of Selma University from, uh, city to city, state. So I think that would be, uh, gain some valuable support. So I want to ask my colleagues if they would be able to adhere to a schedule that I, um, pass it to them, and then I can get, get that schedule to them.
Yes, sir. That would be wonderful.
Councilmembers, anything else? Councilman Justin?
The doctor, I, I know you don't want to see me. Yes, sir. So, you know, we, I do all your repairs, y'all, we, and everything, thank you for supporting me. But anyway, I'm definitely, you know, I'm gonna be there with you a hundred percent. Plus, I would do a person check myself to, to help me personally. Uh, so, but, um, I'm like, I'm sure the rest of us, we're gonna do all we can to help and make this happen. And anything that my sons and myself can do as well, I'll sit, call, y'all, call on us, but we definitely be there for you as well. Thank you, doctor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Angian, for bringing the presentation, uh, we do appreciate it. And I'm going to offer to you what I offered to Concordia. And this is only because I'm good at it. Um, recruitment is important at any university. Any university, that's, that's your membership value right there. That is what keeps any organization, any school, any whatever alive, is the membership, that's, that's the money. If you would like my help in that, this is free help that I'm offering to Selma University. I am good at recruitment, and this is the same statement I gave to Concordia.
Thank you.
You're welcome, very welcome. All right, uh, before we go into, uh, the mayor's report and all of the items, uh, Councilwoman, I want to make, Councilwoman Youngblood, I want to make sure that we have, um, the question that we want for the call. And you probably have, you probably have most of it, and I'm gonna call them off. And then you can just check off your list, just to make sure we have all of them. Uh, the special needs program for the golf tournament for, uh, that, uh, Mayor Eddis puts on. Uh, those days are fifteenth and the sixteenth. Uh, Stop the Violence, I think, uh, Councilwoman Thomas has solicited our help for the Stop the Violence program. The Lupus Walk, we had Ms. Johnson to present to us on last night. The Fall Festival, we had Ms., uh, Avarado to present to us on last night. And today, we have Selma University to present to us on tonight. Is that all of them, Councilwoman? Okay, and she will, uh, get this around to us, you all, and you, um, give it your pleasure. And Councilman Asher will create a schedule, uh, concerning the radio phone and pass it around, and so make sure that you, uh, pick a date and a time, or maybe he's gonna pick a date. Pick a time that you can go.
When I was on each council, uh, I was staying.
Okay.
Uh, they have to identify a focal beat and time. Uh, and, uh, would be a few times, you know, and I asked him to spend at least, at least thirty minutes on the radio. I was supporting this.
All right, this deal sounds good. We're going to the mayor's report, is the mayor available to report, or anyone from his office? All right? We're moving on down to the financial update. Madam President.
Good evening, Councilwoman, citizens. I am going to go over the report, financial report as of August thirty-first, twenty nineteen. As you're aware, we have, we are still in the process of trying to, um, get current as a result of the current hack and having to go back since September twenty-third to enter information. So it's taking us some time to get everything updated.
Hopefully, you honestly, I hate to, I hate to interrupt you, I wanted to say this one more thing because I mean, at six o'clock, Councilwoman, I did leave off one thing. The school of the Scuncrey will be the ambassadors for the city of Selma, Alabama, in New York City itself. And, uh, you all probably have gotten correspondence from Safiya in August, but, uh, help her, help her school, and help them all get to New York City. They will represent Selma in a special way in New York City, and so, uh, we, we, we need to consider that as well. I'm sorry.
There she is, out there in the back room. Waving hands, right. She got tall.
I can't see her.
She got tall.
Girl.
She got a little tall over, over the summer.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
But go. Go ahead, Madam President. So, um, so what I'll be reporting on as of August thirty-first, um, we are still working to input data and get information that's current, um, and as quickly as we can for September thirtieth due to the system hack. I guess that's the proper word to say. So, uh, so I will report on August thirty-first. Uh, sales tax for the month of August was seven-hundred-ninety-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars, up by seventeen thousand, five-sixteen-eight-three. Lodging tax is up by five-thousand-one-seventy-three. The total amount collected is thirty-one thousand, two-thirty. Tobacco tax up by three-thousand-eight-eighteen. Uh, total amount collected nineteen thousand, five-fifty-nine. Uh, for the lodging, lodging tax surcharge for the month of August, uh, is thirteen thousand, three-ninety-eight, uh, up from the prior year by eight-thousand-one-fifty-two. For the tax and sales tax that we collected is up by two-thousand-one-eighty-nine for a total of ninety-nine thousand, five-ninety-seven. For simplified federal use tax, we're up this fiscal year, not for the month of August, but by twenty-nine thousand, three-forty-one, um, collected for the month of August, forty thousand, eight-eighty-three, uh, based on the information provided, uh, in all areas of, of tax collection revenues of. So that's a, uh, uh, we ain't in a positive direction as a fifth in prior, prior, prior report.
Uh, before you go on here, um, next one is, the tobacco, the tobacco, um, tax, it, it is up, but it's, it's barely up. Do we know what's going on? Do we have our stickers out, um, are we putting labels? Do we know what's going on in there?
That'd be a question for the tax collector.
Okay.
Uh, she, you can probably get that.
Yeah, we, we have a question that I'll present. Councilwoman, would you have hands up concerned with tobacco?
Yes. The question you just asked, considering how, um, it's important that we have a question we want to ask to have our, uh, tax collector person here so we can find out exactly what's going on.
And, uh, so, councilmembers, you all keep that in mind that we have made, we have made this request for, um, the tax collector to, uh, be present. And, um, you all be mindful of all things discussed, is what I'll say. Okay, all right.
Okay, for the year-to-date revenue, total transactions revenue received has been sixteen million, seventy-eight dollars and, uh, seventy-eight thousand, fifty-six dollars. Um, prior year, year-to-date was seventeen million, four-eighty-two, five-forty-eight. So it looks like where we will be at or above, um, where we are considering, um, what has been received in and what we anticipate to be received in for the month of August. And we're still working with the.
Sixteen million?
Sixteen million, seventy-eight thousand, fifty-six dollars. Year-to-date expenditures, twelve million, nine-sixty-one, one-ninety-four. Prior year, sixteen million, nine-twenty-two, uh, thirty-eight dollars. And, um, we will be way below that, and you all know that it's due to the layoffs and a large part of the city's expenses, our salaries. So, um, that's where we, um, follow up.
Any questions? Councilwoman Asher, then, Councilwoman Thomas.
I had an action of things waiting in the news about the balance restitution that must be paid to the city. I do know that this, we, we pay this, they're made, but I need, I need to know what is the balance that is due to see how far out, uh, these restitutions will be completed. So, we need with our attorney to secure that information for us, and I think, you know, the information that we need to know.
Yes, sir. I will do that.
Obviously, this is something that we need to know.
Um, Madam President, you stressed again just now. Um, are you saying you have had no response?
I had to have a response.
Okay.
From Wood.
From the attorney.
Because it requires research, and I don't know if, I don't know why he had, but I guess that he probably had, had to do the research. But I did send a request, but I will follow up with him.
I'll do the basic, the basic.
Okay.
Couple of things I wanted, uh, Councilwoman Asher, you had asked that I kind of have a discussion with you regarding the lockbox and, uh, just kind of get you familiar with it. Um, the lock, the lockbox process is what we use, uh, through, for ATS, the American Traffic Solutions, in collecting our red light traffic camera revenue. Uh, they come, all the, all the money is remitted to the lockbox. The company, which is Ver mobility, reconciles it. Once they reconcile it, and they send it directly to the city.
Casualties.
I imagine it's, it's check or money or, or credit card. Uh, US, US Bank, who's, who is our current lockbox provider, uh, sent a notice to Ver mobility that they are no longer accepting, they are no longer doing, performing lockbox services. So therefore, it's, uh, Ver mobility with, um, the task of trying to find a new lockbox company. And, uh, ending the contract with US Bank. They, uh, offer their customers, uh, three options. One, to use, um, our own banking system and try to do that, which I don't recommend for the reason that the reconciliation process will be very tedious and almost, it's very time consuming. Um, no, it's not like missing funds, we would have our own, um, lock, we would all have our own. But there's like, for every person that, and then there's a level confidentiality that draws concern because every person that, everybody's credit card, the city will be receiving in. It will be coming, all the information and the money will be coming through, directly through us. And that's your. Yes, sir. And my recommendation is that, um, as I stated on yesterday, is tier three, which is the same as it has, uh, the same process that we have been doing with USA, with US Bank. But we just going through, I think it's O-Pay, which is a new lockbox provider. Well, the transition is set to occur December thirty-first. Um, and we are trying to get this done by the end of, at least by the end of this month. Personally, I sent this information over to our attorney a month ago, we're just trying to move forward on it, so. Yes, and, but I, and yes, I, I've talked, I spoke with our attorney. He, and I asked him to review the agreements. He's reviewed the agreements and some of the things that he want, two important things that he wanted us to be aware of. And one was that if there's any litigation, we would just have to file in the Florida court. Oh, he's getting, that, that, these are, these are the responses. He, they prepared the resolution for tier three, which is a continuation of what we, we're doing, but with a different bank. So that, this is the information packet that I presented before council also attached. It's a memo, uh, with the response from our attorney that's explaining what's been, what, what, what we should be aware of. And, you know, the option is up to council to how, uh, as.
Could you please?
Sir.
Okay, would you tell us what number two is, please? You gave us number one, what was number two from that attorney?
Um, no, no, okay, number two from that attorney.
Litigation has to be in Florida with number one.
Right, uh, that's, um, that is, um, governed by Florida law. And. And, and that the city should, um, what the concern was, whether or not the, the information that I discussed earlier about storing the data payment information, credit card information, um, if we acted as, I do directly with them as opposed to a third party, then we're responsible for breach of data. So he was saying that if we are, in summary, this is what I summarized, and you can check it with the email, that if we, we, if we do it directly ourselves, then we could be liable for any breach of information. My recommendation is that we continue, as before, with tier three, where we have, well, we have a third party.
And that's the resolution also. Is that the resolution you presented to us on the day?
Yes.
So the third party is a protection.
Right, okay.
All right, any further discussion, we have a motion to the council people. All right, Madam Trump, roll call.
President Pro Tim Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilman Bowden?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson? Councilman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilman Asher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. I have, um, another discussion that I was going to talk about. Um, uh, June twenty-fifth, I just want to read this excerpt. Um, it said, Councilwoman Youngblood stated that she was under pressure that contracts with the radio station were canceled.
Um, it said, Councilwoman Youngblood stated that she was under the impression that contracts with the radio station were canceled, but in terms that they may not have all been canceled. During the discussion, a motion was made by Councilwoman Youngblood and seconded by Councilman Randolph that they may cancel any and all remaining radio contracts that are being paid by the city of Selma. A roll call was taken and motion was passed by unanimous vote of council. Councilwoman Youngblood stated, as a point of clarity, that this action does not affect the current radio station that is covering council meetings live show that is paid for through sponsorship and not the city itself. Uh, council. Yes, um, I, I just want to address the issue. I know that previously you voted not to continue mornings with mayor broadcast, not just mayor, but just any live broadcast. Because they didn't receive a thirty-day notification, we, uh, the council agreed to go ahead and pay for June and July. We did. And now it has come back again for August and September. I just would like to, um, get clarity in on whether or not these invoices should be paid. And the reason, I'm, I'm sure you all, some of you may have read your email, but, but others may not. I, I sent, the mayor has submitted to the finance, uh, finance department, two invoices for August and September's payment. I sent him an email saying I was unable to authorize due, based on what council had approved on June twenty-fifth. I just, I, and he also responded back, I don't know if you all had the opportunity, but I just want to get clarity, um, as to whether or not these payments should be paid so we can move forward.
Council members, this, this indeed, uh, was on, I'm glad you brought it up on the year report. This is, this is indeed part of what I would have discussed and asked her about as well. I spoke with, uh, um, Madam Treasurer on today concerning it. The email, the reply from the mayor, the mayor came today and I'm not sure the date of her original, uh, email down there. But the reply came today. So if you have not gotten the chance, you have to, okay, hopefully you all have, have read it. You want to read the reply? Uh-huh. Go ahead, go ahead.
This is it, I'm not sure. It said, "Good morning, Mrs. Wade, Miss Wade, you let me know if this is the reply."
That sounds like.
"Please see the following email that I sent to President Bowie and the entire council. It is my understanding that President Bowie informed you that the council were under assumption that the radio broadcaster was under contract. I helped, I've been talking with management, the funding source coming from tourism. President Bowie told you the council would address this matter at a later date. Until the council addresses it, you should continue to function as we always am and face back communication from tourism. Please find the email that was sent to the entire council." Is that the email?
Yes, can you read first?
Uh, "Give President Bowie, is that, ask me to read it?
Yes.
It is, it is salute. Is that from America?
Yes, that's, that's what he attached.
On June twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, the Selma City Council Board and Legal Committee meeting to cancel any and all remaining radio contracts. According to the minutes, Councilwoman Youngblood stated that she was under the impression that the contracts with the radio station were canceled. But that it is her understanding that they may have not all been canceled. During discussion, a motion was made by Council, Councilwoman Youngblood and seconded by Councilman Randolph that they cancel any and all remaining radio contracts that are being paid by the city of Selma. A roll call vote was taken and a motion passed by unanimous vote of the councils. Minutes of Selma City Council, June twenty-fifth, by the PM. The Treasurer, Renee Wade, has taken this as the council was searching not to face back communication for services that have already been rendered. There are at least three issues with the Treasurer's refusal to pay for search services. One, there is not a previous recorded vote for the council voting to end services with back communication prior to June twenty-fifth. Two, council did not vote to default services that had already been rendered prior to the vote. Thus, the bill for the month of June should be paid in full on the national advertisement account. Three, the services with back communication were not contractual. Thus, any vote taken to end any and all contracts with radio stations does not improve the mass office utilization of back communication. Again, a refusal to pay for search services is reneging and defaulting on bills that are past due. If it is the council's desire for the national advertisement account to no longer be utilized, please provide my office a copy of the minutes where the council voted to suspend spending from the aforementioned account. I urge you to have the Treasurer pay the invoices for back communication, which he has deliberately decided to perform. Thank you, Mary Ann Darryl Melton. We have made history, we are now making our future.
Okay, thank you. And I had hands up right before, uh, Councilwoman Shaw, but I did want him to read that. And I do, I see your hand, Councilwoman Thomas, I see your hand, Councilwoman Youngblood. And I know you wanted to answer something. Council, uh, I'm, I'm going to make you the Councilwoman Award candidate. And I've been calling you this since yesterday. Uh, Madam Treasurer.
Um, I want to make two points in reference to his, um, his email. The first thing was that, um, you all had agreed to pay for June and July when I came back.
You did that, right.
And I, what I did, which was appropriate, is to seek guidance from the council who made the vote. You agreed to pay it, so I paid you in July. Now we're coming up, this is relative to August and September. So, and then here's the second thing, there's a gray area here because I just had this conversation with Councilwoman Johnson, who was, um, going back, we were having a dialogue about whether or not there, um, if it was a purchase order, if it was a contract. So here's the, there's this implied and express contract issue going on here. So if it's a contract, whether or not if it was a signed agreement, you said, what you said, signed agreement? So if it's a contract, because it's a signed agreement, contract is a contract, whether you got it written or he signed off on it to approve. So what I'm seeking is clarity. Now, if council has changed their mind or decided to go another route, or there was something that was absent here when the decision was made, then I just need to be made aware. That's why I got, I received the invoice on today's Tuesday, on Monday, as I held off on it, brought it to council on Monday to get clarity on that. And that's something that I chose to do. And I just want, since we are on, you know, getting clarity and going back and forth, I just wanted to bring back up what you said, that it was a costly mistake for me to pay cop. Uh, you and I both know that if it was a disallowed cost, it would be costly. But we don't know that that's a disallowed cost. It's the fact that we've had an attorney to opine on it and say it wasn't a disallowed cost. So, one, once it goes to the AG's office.
Hold on, hold on, Councilwoman.
Once, once.
Councilwoman Shaw, there's a.
Once it goes to the AG's office or whoever office it needs to get a final opinion on it, then go forward. As I said before, and explained to those who are not familiar with what happened was, it was on the consent agenda to be paid. It got pulled in the process. President Bowie prematurely signed off on it. I acted in response because I had it in a folder of items to be paid, just like you all forgot to bring it back up on the agenda. I forgot to pull it out of the invoice, same thing, no difference. In terms of whether it's costly, I would have to disagree that it's costly because it's an allowed cost as far as we concerned. Now, if the, the opinion, to get the final opinion, is to prove that it's not an allowed cost. So I just want to bring clarity on that since I'm standing.
Okay, I, I want you to respond very briefly because what we're not going to do is, because this, we're going to have people working on it. We're not going to spend an hour on this because we're going to go back to what we're talking about. So please respond briefly and we got other hands.
I didn't, I didn't expect for us to tell into this scenario, I was talking about in contract.
We are, we are.
I owe you, I, to something that was not, uh, uh, well, to make a little story short. Uh, you admitted that it was an mistake and accident. I'm not blaming you, not one hour. What I stand by and affirm is that the council did not vote on it. And I stand by and affirm that it is a cost that should not ever be. Now, if legal authorities tell me that it was okay, I'll accept that. But if legal authorities, I'd like to say it is not a cost that should be incurred by the taxpayers, then I'm going to demand that the city of Selma will be reacting to the cost, plain and simple.
All right, and we're done with that subject. And we're, we're going back to what we were talking about, this contract. So in my, go back to my discussion. In my phone call with the Treasurer, I asked, uh, something that the Councilman read, that it was non-contractual, um, by the words of the mayor that I read just now, so there was no contract. Then I asked the Treasurer, was there a purchase order request? There's no purchase order request on file. And they're being paid against an invoice. And that's where she and I, I guess, uh, went back and forth, I'm calling back and forth because she's calling back and forth. I'll call it back and forth. Went back and forth concerning contracts, her, the purchase order request process and how this is being paid. And this has, this has brought us to this point to give her clarity on what to do. And so make a decision on what that is, give it to her, uh, tonight so she can move forward or backwards on these two bills that she has. I have a hand up with Councilwoman Thomas and Councilwoman Youngblood.
I would like to say this as the leadership of council person sitting here. When we do, um, when we vote, just like the minutes say, it was a non-vote that we talked about the radio shows. We said to council, all, all radio shows, except the ones that are being sponsored by, some of the citizens of Selma has been sponsoring the radio shows. And I think that, um, when we, when we take this vote, the council is the sole body. When we, when we take this vote on this, I think we should stick to what we voted on. And he gets the minutes, we did the vote about this, this, about the radio shows. When we have, uh, our leadership does be here during the work session, not us, the council meeting. And once we take our votes, whatever minutes that we have done that day, I, the mayor gets the, the minutes. So I think that if we're going to stick to what we vote on, I think we should stick to what we vote on.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And I'm going to pause here and allow school of discovery to exit. Thank you all so much for being here. I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry about, I, I totally forgot your request to take a picture. We can do that? No, no, no. Come quickly.
Their parents are waiting.
Okay, I, I, okay, I forgot. Thank you. I forgot about that request. Somebody take a photo. Ms. Ellison, do you mind taking a photo of them in the hall for them that quick? Okay. For them. So she minds. Right quick because their parents are waiting. Sheriff, um, Smith, Chief, Dean, Chief Green and Chief Graham and Sheriff Smith. Y'all mind jumping in the picture and asking of the council, please? They have requests to take a picture up here with the council. So do you all mind if I designate people? Thank you. All right. We're going to Councilwoman Youngblood. Thank you.
Um, laying aside the issue of contract, laying aside the issue of purchase order. If, have we been paying this out of national advertising the whole time?
Yes.
It'd be a major miracle if we don't get all taken away in handouts up here, us.
And we who are responsible for paying the bill.
That is not, national advertising is for Selma to be advertised in things like. Youngblood, Eddie was up here. And I asked him, I said, and I was asking him about each of the budget items. And I said, what is the ad, national advertising for? I didn't just ask about that, I asked him for se, about several other things because I had not had the opportunity to meet with him before, you know, about budgetary issues. So, and, um, when I asked about, I said, is that about things like Southern living? We used to have an ad in Southern.
I saw it.
Right, it, right. And we used to have ads and then we used to have a billboard in Montgomery that said, that I believe Eddie Jones used to do history lives in Selma. And I used to see it when I lived in Nashville, it would be right.
Are you agreeing on motion, Councilwoman?
Well, what I'm just doing is I'm just saying, we have no business going up using national advertising money to go on a local show and talk to local people about local things because the purpose of that money is to bring in money from outside to make money, to bring in tourists here. Uh, not for, you know, just to discuss, it's not for a talk show locally. Uh, it'd be different if he had, uh, you know, if he had Congressman John Lewis or somebody in national interest that he wanted to go on the radio show with. But, um, I mean, I'm just appalled and aghast at that. I didn't kind of heard that. I thought, I mean, I thought that wasn't true, I thought that was just a rumor. You know, people tell things. But yes, that is a motion. We are not going to be going. And we, we have got to make sure that money we spend is what it's supposed to be spent for. And I am as guilty as anybody else for not paying attention at that. Um, and I'm sorry.
Say your motion first.
I, I'm just like, we are, we're, we're, we're not going to pay anything out of the, 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 um, national advertising budget that is not nationally advertised. And I feel like I have a right to do that because that comes under the community developer budget.
Prices went up by eighteen dollars per month, so just a while.
So let's make sure that this motion is plain and clear to where the school discovery that just left here can understand it. And so let's, let's make it plain. I'm saying that we're not going to pay for radio, we're not going to pay for radio out of national advertising. And it's not just radio, it's like something in the Selma Times Journal or the Selma Sun out of national advertising or anything that's only local. It is for national advertising, it is to advertise Selma to people nationally. It is to help promote the Julee if we ever get the, the battle back, uh, to promote other things.
So what I'm asking, are you saying pay it from someplace else or not paying at all?
Yes, find another place to, to, to pay it. I mean, that puts us at risk.
Okay.
Don't y'all realize they arrested a whole city council somewhere?
Does it do realize? Councilman, right now.
Yeah. I, I, I think, you know, the council had already spoken that he was not going to pay for his radio show period. So.
That's why I'm asking, make it clear.
I don't want to go talking about getting it from somewhere else. All the thing he do on his radio show is talk about you, Susan, Sam Randolph, Carl Bowden, well, um, Larry Benjamin, Mike Jackson, Corbin Pooh and, uh, Jayden Tommy. That's it.
I'm sorry, he said council.
No, he don't talk about y'all, he said.
We got moving back and forth.
No, he don't talk about, he don't talk, he talk about eight of us up here. I mean, six of us up here, that's it. So why would we waste taxpayer money for him to talk about Sam Randolph lying on me? That's a lawsuit, tell me, I, I was paying for all the football tickets with city money. He know that came out of the police department, everybody know that. I ain't had nothing to do with that. And, 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 and he, he know that, that was, the, the, came out, well, I'm just, I ain't.
I'm asking him to adjust his amount.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, this is not fair for us to keep allowing him to just come on the show on Friday and talk about council people, you know.
What are you offering to Councilwoman Youngblood?
I'm, I'm just saying, Councilwoman Youngblood, we don't pay for a period, we already voted.
Really already did that.
Yeah, we already voted for.
We already voted.
So we already voted, don't pay for a period, so why we discussing it now?
We're discussing because Treasurer hasn't done that, when she has asked us to make it clear to her on whether she should hold, did you read your email?
Yeah.
Whether she should hold or pay two bills that she has for August and September. She needs the guidance of the council.
Okay. Not to pay it, if any of y'all still paying behind your back like they're numb, do fine.
Can you make it? Make that a motion.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm not talking about the fire.
No, it gotta be the fire bar, because he gonna, he gonna go through something.
Well, I'm saying, I'm not saying, you can say whatever.
Well, if anybody paying that bill, they should be fired. That's something, it's too many things that going on in council that we vote on. And then he going out behind her back, hey, sugar.
Councilwoman Yama, what's your statement?
The motion is, the motion is not to pay any radio program. If anybody in her office paid that bill behind her back, they are fired.
Okay, but anyway.
She can be fired, we can be fired, but she can't.
Yeah, you lost me thinking.
Okay, well, we take out the firing part, but it's just not fair for.
Restate your motion so I can get two hands on it.
Okay, my motion is that we vote not to pay any radio program with city funds.
Got this, Councilwoman Yama.
Yeah.
With exception.
With the exception of a live council meeting which is sponsored by citizens, so it's not sponsored by.
Yeah, it's paid by other people. Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes, I would like to say this. I'm with the motion that he recommended because this body here, we have to be very careful. We going, we allowing ourselves to be into something that we're not knowing about, that money being used. We just got to do what leaders are supposed to do.
Thank you. Councilwoman Short?
Yes, I'm kind of lost here. I go back to the mayor's communication to Miss Ray. And I'm reading, thus, any vote, any vote taken to end any and all contracts with radio stations does not include the mayor's offered utilization of Scott's communication. What do that mean?
He can pay in the discretionary.
Yeah, they can pay in discretionary.
I think, I think it means more than that.
We need a lawyer to tell us.
I will have a man.
Go ahead, go ahead. Well, I'll get you. Okay, Councilwoman Bolin, the Councilwoman Yama.
Well, I think we have an outstanding bill here that goes to a local.
I believe she said Councilwoman Yama.
Oh, I thought she said Bolin, then Yama.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Please forgive me, I'm so sorry. I'm old. Go ahead, Councilman.
We're all aging a lot up here in the last three and a half years where we've been. My point is that we have an outstanding bill for a local vendor that has actually been received in good faith on their part. Again, it was not under contractual obligation, therefore, I agree with Councilwoman Yama. It doesn't need to come out of our national advertising budget. At the same time, it has to be paid because it was entered to by an agent of the city without regard to getting the contract. It was outside the scope of contract. Now, it would be nice if the mayor pony up out of discretionary to pay that out of his discretionary money and not national advertising. But I think after that, you need to send a letter saying that the city council will no longer.
I need to send.
Well, we need to send a letter drafted. So when you pay the bill, it goes with that check. Because they're always gonna look at something that goes with the check. So if we are thinking that way, then we need to make sure we pass this correctly. And then we put language in a letter, either us as council, and get that to them so they understand exactly what's happened. Because I think they're confused at the radio station level about exactly what is happening. So, again, I all agree in getting sound there and talking negative about everybody is not the answer to what's going on in our city. But if you base it with discretionary, we can't really much stop it for that.
All right, and before we go to Councilwoman Yama, that letter is on the way. That's the other thing that I talked with the treasurer about today when she and I were speaking. I impressed upon Council President Bowie how important things are in writing, especially now. So we have, even though we said it verbally, we have to put it in writing. She needs it in writing to attach to whatever she's gonna send over. And I don't think, and I could be wrong, y'all are meaning not pay the two bills but hereafter. So y'all tell me what y'all mean by your motion. Councilwoman Yama?
I don't think, even the bills that we have now, I hate for a bill not to be paid to the city. However, we had said that we're gonna pay, be paid. And I had a conversation with Paul myself, and he told him, you know, I'm going to try to see if these can be paid. I had no idea they could be paid. But I said, the council's not gonna pay anymore. So you're gonna be, you're gonna be having those trash people shows that you're on risk. And I don't know what to say because I don't listen to them, I don't really enjoy them. But anyway, so, you know, I had told Paul, who I call Paul, that we were going to, you know. Now, the mayor could pay, then we made the motion not pay them out of city money, period. But if he wants to pay, we have all those things that paid them out of our discretionary money. And I think that that's fine if the mayor wants to pay it. He gets a good little discretionary fund, which the mayor's doing, that's appropriate. If he wants to pay that out, that's mine.
And you are in agreement on the motion? Restate the motion, please.
That, that, the, the, that no more media ads will be paid, from local media ads will be paid from, or shows will be paid from, by the council. If the mayor wants to do the radio, things, they will.
Can you precisely put that for me, Councilwoman Randolph? I'm so beat up.
They say that council, no longer pay for any radio shows that the mayor would like to pay out of discretionary, he had it in mind.
Right, okay, so can I try to summarize? If y'all don't mind, those y'all's motions and y'all's joint efforts. Okay, so no radio ads or show paid from the city's budget beyond discretionary.
Right.
Is that okay? Is that what you all are saying?
That's perfect. That's how she sticks in the side that hang.
There's a motion on the floor, there's a second.
I second.
Councilwoman Randolph's motion, Councilwoman Yama, Councilwoman Yama's second. Further discussion. All right, Madam Clark, roll call, please.
President Proten Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bolin?
Uh, I'll come back to it in a second.
Councilwoman Yama?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson? Councilwoman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman Short? Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman?
Yes?
Okay, now we're back to making sure that the treasurer is having clarity on the two, on the two bills. And on the two bills that she has right now, is what I'm saying. August and September. We just took this vote today, and there's no thirty day notice in writing.
It's in house, ten hours, or you talked about?
No, I mean, just radio station, yeah. That is in process now.
Is there somewhere that that warning can come from, but not national radio advertising?
Discretionary.
Oh, okay. All right. All right, I just wanted her to be clear because she asked us the question. She said that she mean guys on that, we need to be her clear. Okay, anything else? That's it. All right.
Thank you.
I want your ready, sugar.
I got one question for Ms. Way. I got one question.
Okay, Ms. Way.
If you didn't give me a chance to do it.
Well, you have it now, go ahead.
Ms. Way, I want to ask, a lot of citizens ask this question. With the employees laid off, total amount of employees, we have about sixty-eight?
Uh, eleven.
Okay, if we have approximately sixty-eight employees been laid off, with the salary of them, how much money, right now, they want to know? How much money right now would it be? They asking about the two million dollars. So I'm trying to ask you as the treasurer. With, since November, we have had, we hadn't paid the salary. We have had possibly over sixty-eight employees laid off. So the money from that salary.
The salary savings.
So it's there.
It's there for their employees, yes.
So, it's there.
Yes.
So citizen, you hear that? Thank you.
All right, you all are in process, process, process. Right.
We may have to go a different route. Instead, in the system, we may have to do manual checks because we haven't got any cooperation from the HR department or the mayor's office. But we might just have.
And I wanted to say that because I wanted, and want to know, it may take a week. It may take a week, it may take three days. They are going, they are still handling that because of the hack system. So they're having to handwrite things, and they'll have to go.
Fair enough.
Go ahead.
We are writing checks, but in order for us to pay it through the financial software system, we rely on the HR department.
To make them act.
To make them act.
Right, right, right. Councilwoman Short?
How far are you back around the view of the year?
Um, we are in September, and we're updating K and everything for September. What is happening now is, we missed some time, we lost time for closeout, trying to catch up from July, and K and everything from July to August, and then September, that you go through a closeout. We've been on close to finance department for two weeks to allow time to get all of the previous year, sell all the purchase orders, just what a normal accounting department's do. So even as we entering everything for September, we still have to go through our closeout process and make sure that everything is keyed in for the prior fiscal year.
Percentage why, percentage why, how close are you to closing?
Percentage why, how close are we finished? I'm saying we're probably seventy percent. And then we have to do the closeout process, and we are trying to do both simultaneously.
So I, be some intent with this council voting to extend the eighteen, nineteen budget. Think it would be random, trying to random line with the closeout?
I would like to say yes. I mean, my staff is working, trying to get all the information in here. We're trying to get everything in. And I got a reminder, council, since we said that we have still not completed the past previous year audit. Not the year prior to last year audit that we finished. We still, and then we have to prepare for this audit. So we have, what's the problem? I don't know, because when I got here, I was told it was what, about eighty percent complete? But obviously, that was not the case because there was, there's a lot of documentation and information that I obviously still have, and they're asked for today. Like, I have to do a management and discussion analysis, complete that part. But because of everything that's going on here, that has gotten sidetracked. I mean, when I, eight months along, we should have been having audit in hand. They have, supposed to have a draft, still gotta respond to findings. So there's a lot, a lot of components that still fits outstanding. Like I say, probably what, a week ago, I was still sending confirmation letters, a confirmation letter. So there's a lot on the finance department's plate.
Okay, Councilwoman? Oh, okay, I got you. Okay, when I went to the mayor's report, I knew that Chief Green came in, and I don't know if he's still out there and if he was here to report out of the mayor's report or not. Chief Green, and I see Chief Graham, Chief Graham is here. Council members, how much more time do y'all need to look over the, how much more time do you all need to look over the three recommendations for files? You know, last meeting, y'all said we need more time, and you. Okay, I just was wondering if he was waiting to report on the mayor's report.
Councilman, next council meeting.
We should have.
We need to go.
We need to go.
Okay, is that good, you all?
No.
Is that good for you all?
Time is coming for the police.
Okay, and I don't know if that's why Chief Graham was here waiting. And so I wanted to bring it up, just in case that's why he was waiting. All right. All right, we are now down to two business items that we took off the consent to general. Item number four reads as follows. To approve thirty-five thousand dollars operating cost transferring from tourism lodging tax to the general fund. And your figure just went up, Councilwoman Thomas, go ahead.
Yes, can you, the top line was, you just explained a little about it that I put in the area that announced, you know, so I got, can you, can you give me?
Get it clear.
Not, not, they didn't. Two more minutes.
Okay, I'll go ahead.
Before I have to figure that out, there was a request from the old YMCA. You know, they came to us during the budgetary, asking us to restore that lodging tax.
Y'all, y'all here to ask for a nation council.
That's very beneficial to them in the past. And because of the resources we're given, we're not able to, you know, with the costs. They come back asking us to restore that support. And they have submitted a complaint on their credit, Alabama power bill, asking us to cut it down. And I think that was excessive, and we transferred thirty-five thousand into the general fund that will be relegated to offset the cost of that Alabama power bill. And I think that bill was twenty-nine thousand dollars. So that's basically what was sticking.
Okay, so Councilwoman, I'm not sure if you were left back on that. No, I know, or not, but it is, so what you had asked, you asked what the amount is. So it is what Councilwoman Short had said, it's actually twenty-nine thousand and something. And that's probably what you're seeing as a difference. When Councilwoman Yama asked what is, we did not during work session, but that's what you said, oh, oh, oh. But it is an Alabama power bill from the YMCA, twenty-nine thousand, in the name of the doctor.
Okay, can I say something on that?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to say something on this, you know, as a leader, we all, sometimes we have to. Twenty-nine thousand and six hundred dollars worth of power bill in this, with our situation, with our city and things that he need. I'm against paying the whole twenty-nine thousand. I don't believe that we should pay the whole twenty-nine thousand. Because it's like, that's a lot of money for us to pay for Alabama power bill for the YMCA. I just feel like we should not, we should not pay that amount of money, that Alabama power. That's not me, that's me speaking.
Councilwoman Short?
Your chair. Along with, we, with my colleague, I love, Jack, that the larger cost was a fix to help both Y's in the benefits. It was intentionally made to support the Walker Johnson YMCA and the Clarkson Brown YMCA. Because all of us have the condition of the Brown YMCA, we never helped it restore unless there is some magical money that appear. And of course, we decided back in February that we would not renew the contract that expired with Walker Johnson YMCA. Thought the government had been very generous, and we felt that they had two years to prepare for any, very new generation that they could come up with. I love, they didn't like coming to pass, and they came back asking for help. And I do think because that larger tax was continued to be a factor, my chair and colleagues, I think that this YMCA is ours, it is a city facility. They have fallen hard times, and we will be less than dealing if we don't reach out and restore and give it what it needed, especially after we have collected the larger tax. So let's, 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 let's reach out and give the right thing, and just uplift our YMCA, and just give them the necessary resources that they need to get it to speak. That, that, that is my question on that.
All right, council members, you have the twenty-nine thousand dollar Alabama power bill from the YMCA that they are asking us to pay for them. You have heard discussion from two council members, is there more? Councilwoman Yama?
Yes, I wanted to, to say, and I know that Councilwoman Thomas was, she's heard the stories, I'm sure, that this, this is the money that the Y had taken from the city. The Y was looking for, for ways that the city could partner with them and help them raise the money. They went to Greenville, and they went to other places where they had had YMCA's that had fallen into financial problems. And they found out that's what some of those areas had done in other states and other cities. And they found out that's what some of those areas had done in other states and other cities that they had, had collected additional lodging taxes. And in exchange, the, um, hotels get to use, the, 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 um, residents at the hotels get to use and workers also get to use the facilities that the Y repaid. So, and they are the ones that brought us the premise. So after, when, when they don't need anymore, whenever that will be, that will be money that we wouldn't have, but not for the Y having brought that premise to us. The Y brought that and, and then we, you know, they're only getting half of what they brought. You know, the idea that they brought to us. So it's not like it's just, I mean, it's found money for us. What we get all is, is like found money for us because they're the ones that brought it to us. Also, the Y is, is important to sell, not only because it's important to the citizens that use it. You're gonna, you're gonna see a lot of, of people, it's a big quality of life thing, but also people who come to, to look at the possibility of relocating here, bringing businesses here, bringing plants. You know, I had this conversation today. They, some of the people want to look at things like gyms and the YMCA because YMCA's are a big, big deal. Uh, they want to see what's available and things like that. And that, you know, it can be a deal breaker. And if there's a closed Y, that can be a kiss of death. That could cause us to lose an, an opportunity or to lose the expansion. So that, you know, that's just important thing to keep in mind.
Anyone else?
Does the motion?
Oh, yeah, you can make a motion.
I already made a motion that we need to transfer the thirty-five thousand into the general fund with the anticipation of supporting.
That's actually twenty-nine thousand.
YMCA with, uh, relationship to twenty-nine thousand.
Okay, I need to restate that because the audience is speaking and I cannot hear.
I would, I would, uh, motion that the council approve, transfer the thirty-five thousand dollars into the general fund. The sole purpose of supporting YMCA and the, their Alabama power, not a hundred thousand plus dollars.
There is a motion.
Uh, now.
Uh, let's, let's give a second, then we'll go on.
A second, but I'd, yeah, second.
Your second.
Yeah, but the question I'm asking is, um, out of the thirty-five thousand, they, only twenty-nine thousand would come out to pay the bill. And the other, the remainder would stay into the general fund.
Question, councilman, right on.
I, I don't have no problem with you paying it, but, uh, it seem like if we paid it, we might be able to pay more taxes for other folks to come in. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying it now, you know, I wouldn't, I won't necessarily say I'm not supporting YMCA, that's not true, that's not true. But can we get some kind of, uh, maybe, uh, something in return for paying this like this? You know, like, uh, say, say, all first graders will come to the YMCA, something. You, you gotta, you gotta give us something.
I can help you out.
Help, help, uh, find us something.
Okay, before we go to, uh, Councilwoman Youngblood, we have five people still here. Okay, y'all, help me there. Uh, y'all, move it to what? Uh, before we go to Councilwoman Youngblood, um, I want to say that, uh, uh, Councilwoman Jackson, um, yesterday, when this was announced, uh, she said, well, you know, we need to find out if we can really do this. She is ill today, very, very ill today and that's why she kept running to the back on yesterday. And she did call the league, uh, she did call the league on today. She was gonna send me exactly what they said, she did summarize it, I was waiting on it to just read it to you. Uh, um, but she was saying that they said that, um, you have to find a community, uh, purpose for it because the YMCA charges, charges to get into the Y, it's not a free facility. Uh, they actually charged getting their, so, oh, she's talking me. And so Councilwoman Youngblood, go ahead, you want to say what?
Yeah, and there, that, that, that is a big problem because, but here, here's the rub. And that may be a problem here, but here's the rub. Uh, and, and I think saying you probably don't know this and I, I don't think this has been stated. We, they haven't been getting that half of the lodging tax because, you know, we, we said, they had said that, that they thought that, that two years, some, two and a half, three years ago, they had said they thought that they would be self-sustaining. And we said, well, they thought they'd be self-sustaining, it's time to come out, we need, we need a contract. So that was about, that's a little bit less than the money that they would have been getting. So that put them, that and a couple of other things, has put them in the, um, in the hole. That's, so, so if they were still getting the lodging tax, they would not have had that issue. So that, plus, we, we, we have, saying we have talked about, but, but I'd rather not say there's a, there is something that they're gonna give the city back. They, yeah, there is something that, that due for the city, that I, but I would rather talk about that.
I don't, it's not a quick quote with the city, but the league is saying there has to be a purpose.
Right, I understand.
Yeah, I don't know, we can go back and forth on that because you give me this and I give you that. But for the, the community purposes, what the league was speaking of, go ahead, council.
I, I, I think the purpose is that the city, if it were, it would be adding up numbers otherwise.
Right.
They would be able to take, uh, advantage of all these, uh, advantages that the Y presents. That would be available to the city.
Right.
That, that would be the trade-off. Now, now, the other thing is, is that, uh, when this, uh, support was delivered years ago, it was done on a yearly basis. But in twenty sixteen, this council agreed to extend it for two years. With the understanding that at the end of the second year, that we would not be doing it. And I've got to give them time to find out a reset and ready to help sustain it. However, that then occurred and they come back during the budgetary hearing, the planning development committee. Uh, members of the YMCA organization came and asked that that support be restored. And the council, they, I'm thinking the recommendation, what they would recommend, that that support do be restored to the YMCA. Am I correct, councilman?
Yes, and maybe if I can, can point out the thing, um, and I know that I, this is like my third time to speak on it, but, but there, there are so many things, I wish, uh, Ms. Max was out of town. I wish that she were here to clear a lot of these things out. But, um, the director, Mr. Spiny, has been working to try to get things up to snub because it had fallen into, well, anyway, he's working and he's going to be partnering with the Y in Montgomery and they're going to be sending somebody to be helping him to really get things booted up. So that, so that they can really, uh, they, they want the Y to succeed over here. So they're gonna be investing some resources over here too.
Um, can you tell me when they made the presentation? I, I, I have offered to, the new director is saying that I offered to Concordia, same thing I offered to Dr. Sten, uh, and Dionne on tonight, that I could help with recruitment, membership is important. You gotta have a person over membership recruitment or you will always be coming back and coming back and coming back. So I offered that to him quite some time ago.
Thank you.
But in the presentation, uh, can you all tell me if they said anything about city Y? I heard about the city employees, they can go in and they can do whatever. City Y, did they offer anything for the city of itself, itself? What was the community purpose of?
They got, they got, they got programs that extends into the public school system. They are, they are doing things that will, uh, provide some activities for our elementary school. I think Sophie P. Kish was one of them, Dan and now, there may be others. Uh, but once again, you know, the city is always for, uh, supporting the Y. And, and I would imagine if they're not reading, uh, to renew it, then they will not be coming back before asking to restore it because they don't want to get this in town. Uh, I think, uh, I think it would be wise for us to go ahead and support the Y. I think the opportunity for the city to take advantage of the fitness center and all the, uh, activities that the YMCA provides. I think that would be a fair one.
All right, if I could just say one more thing. I, because I think this is important, that just in some of the things they do. They work with every third grader in the city schools because third grade is, has been identified as a difficult time because they're learning some, some, um, difficult, complicated math things and just stuff like that. Anyway, they got some good programs and of course they have things, they don't turn anybody away for any of the difficulty that they, and so, so. Um, e- anyway, that's, that's, uh, young, young blood.
All right, any further discussion? Madam Hart, roll call.
President Pro Tim Benjamin?
No, ma'am, I can't do that this time.
Councilwoman Bowlene, Councilwoman Youngblood?
Um, I'm gonna go no, only because, um, we want to back up later.
Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Randolph?
I'm, oh, yes.
Councilwoman Short?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Thomas?
No.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
All right, we, we call that for me.
We have three signatures and three noes. A top.
Yeah, I, um, I was not enough to reflect that it was of best interest of.
Yes, ma'am.
You got that reported then?
Yes, ma'am.
Item number eight was pulled for discussion. To approve to enter into a contract with Asthma's with the funding coming out of the community development line.
Your chair.
Councilwoman Short.
I, I really don't see, uh, the financial worth of this, I really don't. They're not guaranteeing us anything for sixty thousand dollars. We got people, we got people employed that are charged with writing grants. And up, up to this juncture, they have, they have done an excellent job. I do not see the need to extend sixty thousand dollars to another person on the pretense that we're gonna give, uh, a plan. You may or may not. And of course, uh, I would rather take that sixty thousand dollars and just pay it in itself and, and, so, I vote that to me.
Okay. Someone else?
Yeah, so, you know, I asked to pull it because I was a little, um, concerned about payment. I understand that we can, we could stop this at any given time, but I, you know, but I, my concern was how much money we have to give this later upfront, uh, before we, um, and then all of a sudden, they only got twenty thousand dollars and all of a sudden not getting what we need and also we don't pull it. Uh, and then I wanted to have an opportunity to get a chance to talk to Henry, our planning developer, about the grants, uh, that he write, uh, as well. So right now, I just thought we might possibly make a table, uh, until further notice if we get a little more information. But I need, but right now, if I voted, I would, I would, I'm staying, I'm gonna vote for it because there's more information I need to know on this.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, you, we might have some grant writers, but they ain't getting no grants up there. And so, we ain't stopping playing these games, talking about they write grants, nothing else they doing now. But, but I'd rather take my chance with a professional grant writer who that's all the things she do is write grants. You know, it's all, it's all time, times of grace, I am, you know, uh, Melissa Henry don't have time to sit and find that shit and write grants. He don't have time for that. You know, so, uh, uh, you know, I said vote up or down, you know?
Councilwoman Thomas, then Councilwoman Bushell.
Uh, this, um, young lady that came before us and talking about, um, giving, I really, if we, if we don't get one grant, she's the second. She told us if, if we want, we want to back out of it, we can, we will not lose anything. And, uh, I think we deserve to try to go a new, a new way of trying to get something done here in the city of seven. Because we, we haven't had any grant writing. Every grant writer that we have that they came before the council, uh, we lost the, what, the, post we had a splash pad? Uh, we probably had, uh, there were several grants that were rolled and none of them succeeded. None of them succeeded, I've been, none of them. So I think we need to try to go in a new direction to bring, to move this city forward.
All right, Councilwoman Short.
Oh, you served under the Evans administration. To my knowledge, you all had a professional grant writer that you paid, uh, a whole lot of money to. And to my understanding, that wasn't a whole lot, it was gunned by that professional grant writer. I don't know. Uh, based on my knowledge, it wasn't money well spent and the city didn't get a whole lot out of it for the call that was written. Once again, uh, I, I don't think that, uh, that this sixty thousand dollars that's being asked is gonna be money well spent. And I think that the people in the planning development office up until this juncture, they're not, they're not a job and gathering grants without, uh, other than them being on the city's payroll. We need to talk about sixty thousand dollars, you know, even though it ain't our money, but it's taxpayers' money. And we need to be cautious on how we spend money up here. I don't see sixty thousand dollars much less spent.
May I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, this is a new beginning, a new beginning for the city of seven to improve. Uh, we hear a lot about what, we talk about what Perkins did, we talk about where Evans is. Uh, we've never been a part of other opportunities from the outside to come in to do something for the city of self, the city of self. Uh, other cities have tried this grant writer, other cities, and how I know because, uh, I, I shared at, at some of the Melissa Babble leads, hearing how some of the things that, you know, we gotta step out. We gotta step out and, and, and as a new leader to try to bring something here for the city of seven good. I, I don't dwell on the past of Evans and Perkins, I'm looking at the, the future for the city itself. And, um, sometimes we have to go on our side to get something done, to move forward.
Anyone else? Oh, I, 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 um, I was so happy and elated when Ms. Jessica Chestnut was chosen to come back and serve as the grant writer. But as fate would have it, heaven sent her a pair of wings and she would, she would have been phenomenal. I was happy to hear her called back, uh, by Mayor Evans, called back. She was, um, commissioned under Mayor Perkins and, um, called back under Mayor Evans. But soon as she was called back, um, heaven called. And then came Ms. Carolyn, uh, Power, uh, came aboard and the relationship was severed. I don't know if she said I quit or, or Marilyn said I quit, or somebody said I quit. And that relationship was severed and, and here you go. You had Ms. Jessica Chestnut who was phenomenal and you had, um, uh, Ms. Power that Councilwoman Short feels like she didn't render anything. And I think some more have said it's while he was talking, some more agree with him while he was talking. And so I, this being sixty thousand dollars and this sixty thousand dollars is a revenue generating line item. This will actually generate revenue if it comes into fruition and it can be canceled at any time. Uh, I, I like that option of canceling at any time. Uh, if she writes one small leasing grant, let's say for sixty-two thousand dollars, then we pay sixty and made two. And then we can get rid of her at that point and say, hey, you've done nothing. Um, but I, I'm just thinking it's worth it, uh, she's league certified and recommended. Uh, she speaks very highly of herself and you're supposed to. But, um, I'm thinking in my mind that we need to give this revenue generating line item a chance. And that's just me. Okay, anyone else? Councilwoman Youngblood?
I would just like to say, did, did she give us a contract, have a contract to run out?
Yeah, she gave us an, an entire packet and I thought I had mine with me, she did.
I remember getting the packet, I don't know what it says about how we pay.
I thought I brought it with me.
I bet she wanted seven thousand dollars upfront of it.
Oh, well, you know, that's.
Well, you know, that's, I, that, see, that's, that makes the difference right there. We don't have to plonk the home sixty upfront. All that stuff.
Of cour-, of course, we can cancel at any time.
Don't worry, it's something.
I think that, yeah, that's probably, uh-huh. Councilwoman LaShaw?
You know, I was thinking of the taxpayers, but I really am. And I, and I, and I haven't just really known a thing when it comes to handling money. I just don't see the worthiness of this kind of contract. The person that write a contract for something, uh, write a grant for something we don't need and, and, and they don't whether we're, you know? Now, is it something that she's gonna come and have us force her to write it to see if this is gonna be acceptable to us? And if that's the case, maybe we need to look at whether it's just something that helped the scale of writing a grant, you know? Here it is, your matches a hundred thousand dollars and maybe something that we can't even use. We can't say she didn't fulfill her, uh, obligation to us. Once again, because of the shortages of resources and, uh, monies that could be very, very used in other areas here in our city. And because you do have people on staff that are writing grants, that are capable of writing grants, uh, I just don't see what we need to spend this kind of money, really don't.
Thank, thank you, and, um, I'm, I, I am careful too. We just paid twenty-nine thousand dollar power bill. Uh, that's not gonna generate, um, revenue. But what I'm saying, this line item is going to generate. Oh, that's right, thank you for reminding me that, that did, but we attempted, we attempted to pay twenty-nine thousand dollar power bill. But what I'm, what I'm simply saying is this has a great potential or of producing new revenue. Uh, and that's all I'm saying about this. And I did text Councilwoman because, because I don't wanna speak, uh, and not be known because she has it right in front of her. I texted her and asked her about the cancellation piece because Councilman Johnson, uh, was a little leery about that part. Do we still owe her sixty if we cancel? So I texted to her, I said, pull out your folder and read. And she did, she said cancel, um, and only pay what is due at that point. We are setting aside sixty, but they may not use the sixty if we cancel. And so I wanted that clarity because I saw, I saw that when you asked your question. So I said she's at home and she had the notebook in front of her, I asked her to do, please look at the notebook.
Okay, anyone else? Councilwoman Youngblood? I, I believe you, oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Thompson?
And the reason why, my colleagues, the reason why I ask, why I say this because of, um, our city needs to, uh, start bringing some new leadership changes, uh, uh, things need to come in, like we should have an opportunity of other cities what I see that grows and have, have the opportunity to have. And sometimes, you know, we have to connect with the Melissa Valley League. Let's, let's try to get some of these people that are in these positions to try, try to help our city move forward. And we do need to see some changes in our city. We need to see something good going for the city of Salem. We just don't go and, uh, uh, go to these sessions and not come back and try to, uh, get motivated, try to get some things done in our city. Because I, I wanna see our city, uh, something new coming out. I wanna see this council bring some changes, uh, something good.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Youngblood?
Thank you. Oh, yes ma'am. Um, we need better infrastructure right now. And what we, what we're able to do is Mr. Hogg, when he gets the big project, he goes to talk to the regional, they help. Sometimes Henry gets talking to the regional about. I'm not maligning Henry, I love Henry and crazy about Henry. Henry's in the unfortunate position of having to do right now as he is told to do, and he is very loyal to his father, as he should be. I admire his loyalty, he's doing what he's supposed to do. Henry has done very well during the own job training and he's learned a lot, he's learned a lot of things. But Henry is, is not a seasoned grant writer and he knows this, he will tell you this. But he has done some and he's learning. I say all this to say, the way our infrastructure is, we need all the help we can get. I need more too, which is arguably the newest and supposed to be like the best, uh, the sewage and stuff like that. And I haven't fallen in. Jamie Thomas looked at my backyard, she saw a hole in my backyard the other day. And when the, when the big rain comes, you know, this drought breaks, I'm gonna be able to put in at least, I would have at least a hot tub, if not a small swimming pool size hole in my yard. Uh, I had Mr. Hogg come in today and I, I wrote a thing to Mr. Henry. I heard that, so, and that's because of the city parts and all that stuff. I have, on Melrose, um, a, a, a business complex area. I have two businesses that have had to shut down and send people home because of sewage overflow in their plumbing and stuff. It, and, and I, I'm not at liberty to say some of the things that it is really are potentially messed up. Real big possibilities for Salem because of it. So we need infrastructure work done. My folks on Lincoln Place, listen, I get practically cuss out things almost every day. They're from within the Mount Mountains, they're thinking I'm not doing anything despite the fact that I've got to do different things, or to do stuff, but it's just infrastructural problems. Wazoo. It's, we have, and that's just in, in, a little piece of my area. And over there in that area, I've got a hospital, I've got a nursing home, an apartment building. So, I can imagine what everybody else has, poor Sam, Johnny, Michael, I, I mean, everybody. We need somebody, and right now, there is infrastructure money, there is a lot of different stuff available. We have a lot of workforce development money available. We have a lot of, um, money for, you know, with the opportunities on and historic tax credits. Somebody that knows how to do that stuff and get it. We really don't have any, let me tell you a real scary thing here. I'm, I'm a lot of that stuff, I'm pretty much it. I hate to tell you, but a lot of that stuff I probably know is much more than, than, because all of that stuff and, and I ain't all that big, I mean, I, so, that's, nobody's, a lot of that stuff's so new. So we need somebody who is really seasoned, can do that stuff now. Saying all that, I'm gonna put the motion on the floor that we do this thing.
Is that it?
Yeah, finally, in discussion, I just asked Madam Treasurer to look up something because I knew she could find it quicker than I, um, concerning just how much we have used from special projects. And I think, um, us unappropriating and a lot of departments have helped us to see a, a better picture of what was needed and what was not. Um, of the sixty-five thousand dollars she just said to me, only twelve was used. Uh, and so perhaps that line, that's where this grant writer can be paid from, from that line item. Uh, of sixty-five, you said what? She said of sixty-five thousand, uh, in special projects, in planning and development, um, in planning and development, only twelve thousand was used. And what was the hundred thirty-seven thousand figure?
In a previous year.
In a previous year?
Yeah.
Before we started doing what we were doing, in a previous year, it was one hundred and thirty-seven thousand. And she's gonna look further into that amount because not only did it confuse me, it confused her. Because we never appropriated that amount, but it was spent.
It was spent.
Okay, I got you.
Councilwoman LaShaw?
There's one to cover on the special project for the, uh, renovation of the James Plaza Julius Park. So, you can't take that one as a special project, so if anybody's going to that park.
Do you know what the total is, Councilwoman LaShaw?
I, I would have to, Mr. Thompson, give me that amount.
So we need to make sure we don't touch that, whatever that amount is.
Some workers being done out.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah.
But then we vote for ten thousand dollars?
So then you can have other areas, sixty thousand.
Whatever amount, uh-huh. Well, we know, uh, Madam Treasurer, wherever it comes, if it runs into, uh, the park property that we already have, we already know, do, do not touch that, um, because we set aside and voted for that.
We voted ten thousand.
I know ten thousand, I don't know what other additional.
Can somebody get one of them back in here, please? Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I said, remember we took the vote? Uh, Councilwoman LaShaw put the motion on the floor that, uh, we changed the name and we put, uh, ten thousand dollars aside to do the, the work at that park down there. We did that.
I don't know, ten thousand, I knew.
Oh, it was ten thousand.
It cost.
It was ten thousand dollars because I can tell you what year that was that we took the vote.
Okay, we believe you, whatever that amount is.
It was ten thousand dollars, that's, that's what it was.
I believe you tell me the year. But whatever that amount is, um, don't touch it, Madam Treasurer, and you already know that, you, you're a famous director, you already know that. Uh, and so, Madam, uh, Clerk, uh, where is Councilwoman Randolph, since he made the statement?
Moving to it. Okay, go ahead.
President Pro Tim Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlene, Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman LaShaw?
I said no when I prayed, I'm wrong.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
You know, let me make this clear, I was there at the time when the young lady made the presentation. There's a lot of questions I want to ask, that's why I want to table, there's a lot of questions I want to ask. So right now, by me not being here at the time, I'm gonna have to abstain from this vote.
We have five, um, affirmative and one extension.
All right, thank you so much. All right, those were the two business items that were pulled from the consent agenda.
Does it, is it a majority of the ones here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. What, what do you think?
Well, it's five, you're like, go ahead.
Okay, well, read it back because she said, she said five, go ahead, read it back, read it back, Madam Clerk, she said five.
Councilwoman Youngblood, she voted yes, Council Pro Tim Benjamin voted yes, Councilman Randolph, yes. Councilwoman LaShaw stated that he was going to say no, but he prayed back and his vote was yes.
Okay, so that's what carries? He prayed that he's wrong.
I apologize.
Okay, that's them.
But it still carries. Are you, you know what? I wanna change my vote on the Y in Letrickville to yes.
Okay.
And that, so it does carry, but I understand there's the issue, Maya called the lake, I'm gonna call the lake tomorrow because I understand that there is, I, I understand that very well. Uh, because I, I dealt with that with the Y and with some other places, they charge your membership fee. So I'm gonna, gonna, you know, gonna deal with that.
Thank you for looking further into that for us, Councilwoman Youngblood?
Now, we can, another thing that Councilwoman Thomas said, well, never mind, I'm gonna merge the waters.
So if you're changing your vote, it will be in the board.
Yes, that's why she changed it, because I'm gonna change it. All right, is there any council member that has some committee report?
I just, real quick.
Go ahead.
And I'm, and I'm gonna make a motion, uh, opinion if it's possible. Uh, right now, I've been getting calls from Recreation Department, uh, concerned that umpire is not getting paid, uh, because of the little, the little, uh, uh, football game that's going on. And, and Madam Treasurer was sort of, was talking. And I think what happened is the money is in the line item for umpire. But the question is, I think we talked about purchase of contract, where I got it, the Attorney Wood, and I didn't get a directive from him, said that as long as there's invoice or receipt, uh, signed, uh, that, that will be based on contract. So what I wanna do, um, if we can, we can vote it on it tonight if possible, but penny on what Mr. Wood, Attorney Wood, say on tomorrow and, uh, hope me and, uh, uh, Madam Treasurer to, to get this confirmed, we're talking on together tomorrow and move forward and, uh, because they out there working, calling the games and they haven't been paid yet.
Are you saying it's a contract?
Well, I don't know, see, I don't know if it's a contract or what, but I know there's a line item for them to be paid. I mean, the money is in, is in the line item. And, um, and, and just right now, we just, uh, need to pick up, Ms., Ms., uh, Ms. Wade, we need to, what, what you, what you need, Ms. Wade, before we make a vote?
The question, the concern, the initial concern that I had was getting the understanding of when, when the representative came from recreation regarding, um, who, how, who get paid from where? We had a line item for employees to get paid on the umpire. Then you had some that were contracted on the umpire. So what I was seeking for counsel is clarity, and I consulted with, uh, Ms. Carnita Ellison, who's, um, she's a laid off employee just to kind of understanding how it was set up. And I got, I have an email where she said, but she's here, if you wanna just talk to her and get her, provide that explanation. And based on that, I just want to just make sure we're on the same page as council, how to move forward, so.
Well, I can give a, uh...
What was that last one you said?
I said that I want to provide, get clarity on, you know, some were paid through as workers, actual employees. But when Van Dyker came, he said he wanted to move all under the umpire association, which would be moving from the salary, you know, moving and moving those people that are normal employees under, into the association.
Which would be us or not us?
Would, would not be, not be.
How we paid, I'm gonna ask you.
That's a good question, I wasn't here that long enough.
Okay, okay, in the previous year, was that, was that line? I mean, how?
Can we get Ms. Ellison up here just to kind of explain something? Let me just read what she said. Um, go, go ahead.
Okay, she said, um, the Dallas County Umpire Association is a private organization which Terry Jackson is president of keeper. She said, um, Terry Jackson and DCU involve all contracts for sports through the City of Salem Recreation Department programs, baseball, softball, football, high school, and I can get this to you, Madam Clerk, and private schools through this organization. According to the Sean Van Dyker Council meeting held on Tuesday, May eighth, twenty eighteen, he stated that Marvin Thomas operates in the capacity of OC and DCU of, um, uncertified officials are individuals who are learning from this detailed information to become a certified official. They are trained and have not completed any courses, classes to be member of AHSA. They are paid out of the City of Salem budgeted line item. And I think that's for umpires, not the salaries. Certified officials are compensated through a contract from the Dallas County Umpire Association. These innovations are registered through the AHSA possess member cards. This is also in the City of Salem Recreation Department budget approved for twenty-three thousand five hundred, account number one point six, sixty-six hundred five one eight one oh. Important to note, workers that have been hired for youth football since Monday, September twenty-third, twenty nineteen, um, gatekeeper budgeted for two thousand three hundred and twenty, um, new hire, um, thirty-nine people, um, there's a list of employees here, referees, there are three referees and I don't know if I should name multiple names, but all these employees have currently, or currently will be paid through the City of Salem payroll as they have been for years. Recreation Department is budgeted for baseball announcements for six thousand two hundred dollars. Baseball, umpires, eight thousand dollars. Complex security, three thousand four hundred eighty dollars. Did, and it says this could be, this has been used and, um, has been used, uh, this has been used in almost two years. Football announcement, announcements, one thousand five sixty. Football officials, two thousand. Soccer, no, no longer coexists with the City of Salem. So, and, and that's been since twenty fifteen. So I guess my confusion was what part of this is for the umpire association, what part I was keeping, maintaining on the payroll? And that's why I kind of, she's doing administrative work for a while, so I sought her, sought her assistance and kind of guided me on how this process.
Okay, I had, um, I had Councilwoman Thomas, then Councilwoman LaShaw. Uh, I'm not ready to vote on this without a contract and without the attorney.
I agree, I'll go ahead and raise.
That's a lot.
He needs to come in too.
Go ahead, go ahead.
That's what I'm saying, Attorney Wood, he need to come.
Right.
And I can get you all a copy of this email so you can see that. And Madam Clerk, I'll make sure you have a copy of it so you can document it for your records.
Yeah, that's all I wanted, because I, you know...
Yeah, I'll forward it to all of you all, this information I received, because she's been with recreation for over, what, a decade or so, and know more about how to process. And I just, it, it really confused me because I recall having a conversation with Shawn Van Dyker, who was actually the recreation director, uh, about, um, wanting to move, change the, the sal-, the position because they want to receive cash, I guess, as opposed to being a salary employee, and he wanted to move, but no decision came before council about it. So I just want to make sure that whatever it is, I'm following the right process. And those are my concerns.
Councilwoman LaShaw?
Could I recommend, you know, the Recreation Department is still open, and you have an assistant director, and Mr. Terry Jackson, who is the longest, uh, long-term employee. I would, I would recommend this, this way that you call Mr. Jackson and find out just how this association is set up and how they're made.
I, I'll call him, but when I, that Terry gets muted by mayor's office when I try to ask some certain things or do certain things, such as the issue became when I needed signatures. And Shawn Van Dyker was not on the payroll when I came back. They told him, "Don't sign anything." So I get, it, it's kind of conflicting. That's why I sought somebody that was a still a city employee, even though she's laid off and had been there, and she handled all Terry Jackson's, um, day, day operation things. That's why I went to it. But I will double back with him just to get a clear understanding, um...
Go and work with your first job tomorrow, and whether he's strong or not, at least he had known.
Right. Okay.
Councilwoman Johnson?
I, I would call up on this, while Attorney, um, stand out. He didn't have to be the mayor along with Terry to come to this, so, thank you.
They need to come before the body, tell us exactly how, before we cast a vote.
I, I, I get, I get that.
Okay. And, and anyone else have, have a committee, committee report?
I just had, yeah, Adam change the, uh, uh, special call because I've been had it. I gotta do it.
He didn't go out. I'm not here to see that, uh, the email. I don't know if you checked your email, uh, it went out at some point today.
Then he said Tuesday.
President, uh, I don't know if he put the date in there, but he did say that your meeting is being postponed, postponed until later night.
You're gonna change it? It's not Friday because I'm...
So let me let you do it on the microphone, uh, since the radio is there, and so no one will show up on Friday thinking your meeting is... Go ahead and do that for me.
Uh, the building committee meeting has been canceled to, uh, Tuesday. We will let you know the time if we're running back, and the people, and everybody else to get it. Mm-hmm, it's council.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Because I be out of town.
I have to go represent.
I gotta go represent our city.
All right. Anything, yeah, council, council people, it's, I'm also to adjourn. All right.
Uh, did you get...
Sacks? Councilwoman Thomas? Sacks, I need to call your lady.
Oh, okay.
Susan, send it up here by Rashi. Sacks, Sacks?